Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:00 PM and the December 4th City Council meeting will now come to order. This evening's invocation is presented by Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. Stand your heads, please. Good evening, Heavenly Father. We are so blessed. We live in our beautiful city of Bellar Beach, and not too many people can actually say that. Yet, Father, I'm sure some of our citizens are going through some tough challenges this time of year, and I pray that they look to you for help and guidance, as we know your strength can help us get through our toughest times. Father, our city will always have difficult decisions and choices to evaluate. Help us, Father, to use the best resources and information available so that the decisions we make are decisions that make our city and community better. And, Father, help us to remember that somehow it always seems when we talk to you first that we always seem to be a little bit smarter. While we know that this is a special time of the year, we often get caught up in the busyness of the Christmas season. I pray that everyone will take a moment to remember why we celebrate Christmas. And in doing so, Father, I pray that more of us will connect with you and make our world a much better place. I love you, Father. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Now, would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Seeing how we are between city clerks at the moment. Mr. Reefer, would you please call the floor?
Councilmember Frank Banker, present.
Councilmember Mark Chester, here. Councilmember Leslie Butero, here. Councilmember Lloyd Roberts, here. Vice Mayor Jody Shirley, here. Mayor Dave Gaddis, here. City Attorney Randy Moore, present. Thank you, Mr. Reefer. We'll move right on over to item number one, which is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion made by Frank Banker. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm gonna give that one to Leslie Butero. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. Now we move on to citizens' comments. Any citizens would like to address the council about a topic not already on the agenda? Please raise your hand and wait for your call on. We ask that you look at your time to no more than three minutes, and remember to direct all questions and comments to the council. If any council members would like to respond to citizens' comments, please hold your responses until we reach council comments. Same goes with the city manager and city attorney. If you would like to address citizens' concerns, please wait until we get to your comment section. Would any citizens like to address the council about a topic that is not already on the agenda? Yes?
Hi, my name is Nicole Sussman, and I'm part of the Bellar Beach Community Foundation. So just a few updates for you. The foundation is currently doing the groundwork to adopt Crossman Park as a memorial to our veterans. We are getting the final votes and working on details of the complete layout. Our goals include the following: a new and much larger sign, American and memorial flags, new landscaping, and memorial benches. Donations to this worthwhile project would be greatly appreciated, or if you would like to donate a commemorative bench, please contact us. The most -- this is another update. The most recent brick order is being installed this Wednesday. Very exciting. We apologize for the delay. There was a supply chain issue with the actual brick for this order, but please stay tuned, it's gonna be awesome. Please save the date for September, February 17. The foundation is having a musical bingo event. More details coming soon. We have business cards with our contact information on the table, and we appreciate your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any other citizens that would like to speak? All right, citizen comments are now closed. Now we're on item three, which is a presentation from the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, beginning with a monthly law enforcement report.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, and city attorneys. My name is Sergeant Joel Berlin, excuse me. I have the monthly stats for your city provided for the month of October. As far as UCR property and person crimes, there was only one that was reported, and that was an assault. As far as year-to-date this year, 2023 October, the numbers are lower compared to October 2022 last year. So last year we had 25 at this time, and this year around 17. There were eight people arrested within the city in the month of October. Half of those were on warrants. One was only a felony, and the other three were misdemeanors. There were a total of 571 events that occurred within the city, with 686 units responding to those events. The top three that included directed patrols, traffic stops, and house checks, that accounted for about 66% of the 571 events. Happy to report there were no crashes within the city in October, and there were 139 citations and warnings that were issued. 109 were warnings, 17 were traffic, 12 were parking, and one was a voting. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Sergeant. For the council, any questions? Yes, Mr. Roberts?
On the other side, are there any details on that for the month of October? One assault, what does that entail?
I don't have that back. You can go ahead and look that up for you, and I can get that to you. You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments for the sergeant? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Glad to help.
All right, now we're on to the monthly code enforcement report. Deputy Clackford.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, citizens. Deputy Clackford for the record. For the month of November, we had about one-third of my code enforcement violations that were dealing with grass overgrowth, which we have resolved a lot of those issues. Another third of it, again, is dealing with unpermitted remodels for any type of building. The rest of it was mainly some houses that need to be repainted, which we have kept those up. And then, again, some of the other issues were trailers and boats parked in yards or up in driveways, which those have all been completed. If you'll notice that this is a short report. Last month, or less of October, first of November, I was off for two weeks, and Danny Downey, he was gonna stand in for me in case we had any problems. So that's my report, and I'll stand for any questions.
Council?
I don't know if this would be on your agenda or even the city manager's, but I got Friday night, and I think I brought it to your attention one time, the junction boxes that are doing for these underground waiting, they didn't underground power them. A lot of them, like at Sixth Street, Seventh Street, I think Seventh Street might be closing, but First Street up to Cosmeway. They're about a foot out above ground, they're six foot square, and there's no cover. There's at least two foot drop in there.
Yes, sir.
So I don't know who would need to be addressing that to.
That would be the contractor that's actually doing that type of work. I've never gotten any complaints or asked any questions about it, but it's something we can...
Somebody could come into Sixth Street.
Yes. And I think also down on Third, they put cones around that one, too.
If they should be covered up, yeah.
We can address that with the contractor. If you want to say it's been a pleasure working with you all, in case you don't know, I am being transferred. Actually, my first day was working down in Reddington, North Reddington Beach. That's gonna be my new assignment for the rest of this week and part of next week. I'll have a new deputy who's gonna be out here, his name is Richard Trump. He's gonna be taking over my duties here in Bellar Shore and Bellar Beach. So again, it's been a pleasure working with you all, and unfortunately, I'm being transferred, so if, like I said, if anything ever comes up, you saw my phone number, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions or concerns that we have.
I have one comment. You can tell Mayor Wayne we don't appreciate you.
I will do that.
I appreciate your good service, and you've done us very well, and I greatly appreciate it.
And again, I found out because I was on a two-week cruise with my wife up in Canada when I got the phone call asking if I would accept this new position, and I told him that I would. So again, Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy New Year. If there's anything I've been able to do for you, please don't hesitate to call.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's been a wonderful week. All right, item four, a presentation from the Pinellas Suncoast Fire and Rescue District by Chief Davidson.
Good evening, the councilmembers and community. Thank you very much for the tree lighting and the free food. Really nice that you have us here. You either month or you can work for the month of November. We only had Indian Rock Beach, 12 calls for emergency services for the month of November. We had 700 training hours, and we conducted 60 life safety inspections with our fire prevention division throughout the beaches. We have a meeting scheduled, another meeting scheduled, January 3rd. It's a question-and-answer session with the Church of the Isles. That's the property that we're moving forward to build an additional fire station, which will better serve Bellar Beach. And we also met with the county on that issue as well last week, and meeting again with them in the next couple of weeks about putting together mid-year funding for a peak-time rescue unit. That would be the ideas I have on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Mondays during the holidays as that station's being built, and then it would be full-time, and we would move the fire engine here, which would be, it's only a two-minute drive to this building from where it's currently located, so it's gonna really improve the response times for this area. We'll continue to work on that. I'll be in Tallahassee for a legislative session, the week of January 8th. We have a state representative, Kimberly Worthfield, who's sponsoring appropriations for us to rebuild our 53-year-old fire station at Indian Rock Beach. So let me know how that goes. Very positive on that. And then, December 13th, we are holding a class. It's an internal class, but I wanted to extend the invitation. And if you would like to be there, it's for our insurance services organization, that's our ISO rating, and the classes we're gonna be moving forward with, get a reevaluation. And it's very extensive detail, but if you would like to stop by, it's gonna be December 13th at the Insurance Town Hall. And we welcome you to come by, say hello, or sit through a class. It's really eye-opening to see a lot of things, and why we do some of the things that we do. And then, last thing, I'm gonna say again, thank you for everything. We hope you have a blessed and safe holiday season.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have any questions or comments for our team? All right, thank you very much.
Have a great night. Thank you.
You and your guys have a nice holiday. All right, we are up to item number five. This is a presentation, an award of distinguished service. Before I call this gentleman up, I'd like to tell you a little bit about him. This guy has been doing a lot for our community for a very long time. Roughly around 1999, he started committee work for the city of Bellar Beach. He seems to think that it was code enforcement at that time, or code enforcement board. He was also chairman of the now dissolved Police Pension Board from 2002 to 2007. Then he went on to planning and zoning, and until recently was there the entire span. So that's a long time, just being on one board from 2007 to 2023 is something that I don't know of anyone that could say they've done that in Bellar Beach. So at this time, what I would like to do is call James C. Imbell, but he's told me not to call him that, so I'm gonna call him JC and have him meet me at the podium. Just stand right. Mr. Imbell, in appreciation of your years of dedicated service and commitment, at least, if not this and so much more that you've done, I am recognizing you for the city of Bellar Beach Planning and Zoning Board from 2007 to 2023. This award of distinguished service is well-deserved, and I appreciate everything that you've done for our city. Thank you. Okay, one more somebody's asked that because no one else has gotten to the word. He wants his bang with the hearing.
Okay.
Of course he has. They want you in the picture.
That's James.
Yeah. Is Mike more funny?
There we go. There we are. Thanks, Robert. You've been doing my best on a Thursday. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Again, I appreciate your service.
I want to thank the city, and everybody should get involved. When I turned a bridge in a snowstorm and burnt here, and interviewed with the sheriff or the deputy, no, one of the deputies was supposed to come in. It was a safe city, I've been in that field for years. And I don't know where the time went. I look at the mayors that I helped get elected that are around this room. I enjoyed that, and our new mayor's doing a heck of a job. God bless us all and the city of Bellar Beach. Good thinking.
All right. Now we're on to item number six, which is the city attorney report. Mr. Moore, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As it's been, as we've covered in our last few meetings, obviously a busy election season on the head for this community. I want to first thank each and every one of you for your service to this community, as well as our volunteers and board members, and encourage anybody who's considering applying during the qualifying period, which is presently open, as I believe is accurate, during the presently open qualifying period, and consider running for office to serve on this council. I wish to remind you that we are now in December. If you can believe it, 2024 is around the corner. The joy that brings for us is another legislative session is around the corner. We're already beginning to monitor what's being filed in committee, in the various committees before session begins. And of course, I will update you as I see any further preemptions coming down the road or any other legislation that may impact this community or your service directly. Other than that, I wish everybody a safe holiday season. I thank you for the opportunity you've served your community this year. It's been a pleasure working with you and your officials, whether they retired or recently been hired or anything else. Thank you for the opportunity to work in this community.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. The city wouldn't have any questions or comments for the city attorney? No? Right. And we're glad to have you on our team. All right, next up is the city manager's report. Mr. Reefer.
Thank you, Mayor. Starting off with the Gulf Boulevard Undergrounding Project. Councilmember Banker made mention of the possible risk of where some of the equipment's going on the Phase 1 portion of the project. So I'll get with the contractor to make sure we do something.
I really appreciate that.
They're still working on the planning and laying out Phase 2, which is the north of Cosmeway section. I just got the Duke invoice today. That's the invoice that we delayed to this budget year back when we approved the project. So they got that to me, which is great, because we'll pay to move forward. The Stormlight Improvement Project, we released that bid on November 8th, and we put it on the Manstar E procurement website. That blasted out to a lot of the contractors that do the type of working area. Of the 20-something plan holders, I recognize about 10 potential contractors who downloaded plans, so hopefully we get a good turnout for the bids. The bid is due on December 13th, which is a Wednesday. We held a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting before the holiday. We offered it up on Zoom as well. We had a couple contractors attend, get some questions. So we're moving forward with that. We are planning a work session on December 18th to have the pump company come in and do a presentation of what they can offer, and just something to think about moving forward in the future. Hopefully, we can get a work session on the 18th. If we don't get a call, we're still gonna have it open to the public for a meeting. The RFP for auditing services, we have a resolution after Duke's night to appoint the audit selection committee. This is part of the statute requirement. Once we have the committee appointed, we will approve the evaluation process for the RFP before we release it, and then that committee will also rank the RFP auditing services of the companies that submit their proposals. And we also have the code review services. I issued the work authorization form for that project. Tentatively, we're looking to have an open meeting to the public to get input on the current city code on January 22nd. But I will announce that once that date is set. And we want to start off the project by opening it up to the community, of course, council and the planning and zoning board, to get the insight into areas of the code that the community feels will need to address. And we also have a board of adjustment here in the next week on Wednesday at 6:00. We have three different properties that have variances, apply for variances. We also have the work session I mentioned on the 18th, and then our city council meeting is going to be on January 8th, the Monday after the holiday. And if we do have an election from the qualifying period, we get enough candidates, we're gonna have our city council candidates night put on by the League of Women Voters on January 10th, that's a Wednesday at 6:00 PM. And then, I'm not sure if it was mentioned, but we also have the third annual Health and Homeless Fair on January 13th, that's a Saturday from 10:30 AM to 1:30 PM. That's all I have for the city manager.
Did you roll that right into the city clerk?
Yeah.
At the same time? Okay.
Yeah, so just real quick, qualifying is this week, and it goes till Friday. At noon is the cutoff. I have all the paperwork in my office ready. If anyone's interested to come in and see me. And we have our new city clerk starting Monday, so...
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Have you had any topics to go to the qualifying?
I've given out three.
Yes, Mr. Roberts?
Kyle, I'm just curious, how many contractors attended the non-mandatory pre-bid meeting? Did anybody come in?
Two, two attend.
Two came in? Okay. And you said 10 potential contractors downloaded the plans?
Yes.
I was just curious about how many did that same step when we did 12 and 13?
We did not put it on the Manstar, we advertised it in the paper and the website.
Okay. So we had two contractors. Were you familiar with them?
Yes, Ajax Daily and KNR, which did 12 and 13.
Okay. Excellent.
Any other questions or comments from the city manager? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Reefer. Now we will move right over to the consent agenda, which is items nine and 10. This is for approval of the November 6th, 2023 City Council Meeting Minutes and approval of the November 13th, 2023 Special City Council Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as written and proposed.
All right, and do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, the consent agenda passes. Now we are on to the regular agenda, item number 11. This is for consideration of Resolution 2023-18 placed on the agenda by City Attorney Moore. Mr. Moore, would you please read this resolution?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Resolution 2023-18, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Bellar Beach, Florida, establishing an auditor, selection, and oversight committee, providing for membership of the committee, providing for the identification of the chairperson, providing for duties and responsibilities of the committee, providing for meetings of the committee, and providing for an effective dating. This has been a reading of Resolution 2023-18, retitled only, Mr. Mayor. And as much as I was asked to, or this is on the agenda as presented by me, I was approached by the city manager and asked about the process for selecting the auditor for the coming year. For those of you who have been serving for that amount of time, you may recall a similar resolution from 2021, establishing an audit committee, and reviewing that in the statutory language, it looked like there were some tweaks that were necessary. Chief among them, the statute requires that while a council member does serve on that committee, he must be the chair, and that's not how it was previously structured. And a few other little things just to make this clear. So this resolution largely parrots the language you would find in the statute. The duties and responsibilities set forth in Section 3 are divided into two categories to capture the process for selecting the auditor and then the continuing engaged role of this subcommittee, which would be composed entirely of one of you and your CAC, your Citizens Advisory Committee. This was one of the contemplated functions of your Citizens Advisory Committee, so you would come together in that context, wearing that hat, and then providing continuing oversight. So that's the purpose of this resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Before we take questions from the council, I'm gonna go to the citizens. Any citizen like a comment on this proposed resolution? Seeing as there are no papers on that, we'll bring it back to the council. I'm gonna need a motion to approve this resolution. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Frank Banker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Give that one to Vice Mayor Shirley. Mr. Banker, do you have the floor?
I believe Mr. Moore has explained it pretty well.
Any other comments? All right, well, let's take it to Reifow. Mr. Reefer, would you please call the floor? Councilmember Frank Banker?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Chester?
Yes.
Councilmember Leslie Notera?
Yes.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jody Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Yigent?
Aye.
So the resolution passes unanimously?
Thank you, Mayor. I do wish to add, though, not specifically on the agenda, the resolution contemplates the appointment of a member to serve on the committee, a member from this body to serve on the committee and chair that committee. Recognizing some of you may not be with us come the new year. If you, if you desire, I think it'd be most helpful to make that appointment now so that the committee can begin its business. But if not, we can do that at a later meeting. I wish to inform the council as to how they wish to proceed.
Question? Can that be done at a work session too?
We typically don't take official acts at work sessions. You're not gonna see that in the statute, but by the way this body works and its procedure, typically we do that. We take official act meetings, so we could, I don't, I don't know that a whole lot's going to happen between now and the January meeting if this board desires, if the council desires to wait. But I did wanna make sure, uh, you were aware of that, of the question.
I would propose that we nominate someone at this meeting tonight. And I would like to nominate Leslie Notera.
Second.
Oh, thank you.
Any others?
I would propose that we wait, only because we're gonna have a, at least one additional, possibly two additional members at the next meeting. Maybe have some backgrounds that are very strong in here. I am wondering if they're strong. Hopefully we'll have somebody with accounting auditing background and skill sets that might fit.
Council, what do you think?
I'm staying with Mr. Roberts. Is that acceptable?
That's, 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 I mean, I defer to manage a Reefer, but that's certainly acceptable. It's a legal course of action. It's really up to you. And I, I, I don't know the administrative pressures, so I defer to manage a Reefer in that regard. So the, uh, the audit committee, the audit selection committee will need to be just to approve the RFP before it goes out, um, given it's the holidays out of winter. Be able to get a meeting in December. So if we do it in the January meeting and appoint the chair of the council, that should work fine, and then we'll meet and release it.
Okay, yep, that sounds like a good idea. And, uh, well, uh, what I would recommend, if, uh, if anyone changes their mind or they decide they, uh, they would like to be on this, uh, would like to be on this committee, then, uh, please contact the city manager and, uh, put your name and the hat. All right, now we will move on to item number twelve. This is consideration of applicants to fill vacant city council seat, uh, which is, uh, to replace Belinda Livingston. Uh, we have two candidates. Uh, we have one, which is Kimberly Shaw Elliott, and we have Michael Hayward. Kimberly Shaw is not here tonight. She is actually attending, or not attending, but she is with a very close long-term friend, uh, with a serious surgery. So she was unfortunately unable to make it, but there.
She's, she's on Zoom.
Oh, is she here?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Elliott?
Yes, I am here. I was just able to unmute.
Okay.
Good evening.
All right, all right. So, um, what I was, uh, gonna do is let each, uh, each cit-, or, I'm sorry, uh, applicant introduce themselves to the council and let the council ask a few questions. And, uh, we'll just take them in the order that they're, they're printed out. So while we have you online, and it sounds like we have a good, uh, clear connection, Kimberly Shaw Elliott, would you like to introduce yourself to the council?
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate this opportunity very much, and I'm honored to do so. Um, I know many of you, uh, so, uh, I'll, uh, give a little bit of an introduction to my background that you might not be aware of. One is I hope I offer a unique set of, sort of, experiences here. Professionally, I've spent most of my entire career in the financial services industry. And what's unique about that is that I've done it as both an attorney and in other positions as an executive in financial services firms. So hopefully I can give reasonable legal advice, but come up with practical solutions and understanding what that means to implement, um, that advice. Here, of course, we have the incredibly, uh, good services of Mr. Mora. But in terms of this role, hopefully I understand what it means when we, uh, enter into ordinances and have an idea of what the practical implications of those are. In those executive roles that I've served here, um, I have been accountable for managing very large budgets. I've been, I understand what it is to manage through a budget. Um, I've engaged in strategic planning, um, and, um, uh, being accountable for results. From a civic perspective, I have, uh, been previously in a planning commission, on a zoning board of appeals. Um, I've been on a variety of different charitable boards and, um, boards of professional organizations. Personally, I moved to, um, Beller Beach in twenty-fifteen, which now seems like a significant period of time, but, um, I, I still feel every day like I'm on vacation when I'm living there. So very pleased to be part of this community. I have had a lifelong love of the, um, of, uh, Florida. We trapped here as a family when I was a kid, every year for Christmas time. So, um, here I am, uh, at the opposite now, um, in the north, uh, during this holiday season. I can tell you a little bit about that is that my dog, who is a good Florida girl, I took her outside this morning to the door. She's literally stuck her nose out, turned around, ran back in the house, all the way upstairs, and crawled into bed. So, um, being the reverse snapper is not exactly the, the wisest choice that I've made, but, um, I, I hopefully can appreciate why I'm here. I've had acute interest in the environment, and with our beach community, I think we have a lot of pressures on us in this beautiful, beautiful place that we live in that balance between how do we preserve that beauty? And how do we protect our homes? And how do we make a livable circumstance? So, um, I'm, I'm happy to be part of the challenges to try to figure out those solutions as we look at our future. I recently semi-retired, and I'm actually considering full retirement, probably in the near future. So with that, I'll have both the time and certainly the energy to, um, meet the challenges of this wonderful community. So I have, uh, the, a great deal of appreciation for this opportunity. I thank you for the opportunity to talk to you today, and I welcome any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott. Uh, council, any questions from the cell? Vice Mayor Shirley.
Yeah, hi, Kim. Good to see you. Sorry, it's not the best circumstances for you. Hope your friend's okay, but.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Have you picked up a packet for the qualifying for this upcoming election?
I have, and the interesting thing about that is that I thought that this would be kind of a short-term, um, appointment if it's successful. But I did learn before I left that the, the opening period is now. So I completed that application and the petitions before I left and submitted them on Friday.
Okay, good, perfect. And are you currently serving on a committee? Am I correct in saying that? I'm not sure.
Yes, um, the, forgive me, I'm blanking on the name of it. It's, it's, it's not the zoning board. What is, what is the name?
Lady and Zoning, is that what it is?
Yes.
Better, it is.
Pine?
Pine, yes.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
Any, uh, any other questions from the council? All right, thank you, Ms. Elliott. Appreciate you taking time, uh, to be with us this evening. Uh, next up is Michael Hayward. Uh, Mr. Hayward, would you like to come up to the podium, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and city council members. I'm back, so I was taught that if you believe in something, you shouldn't give up, so I'm here again. I'm kinda sad Mr. Hayward left. I wanted to talk to him about it up here. He's actually my neighbor and my next-door neighbor. He was there with me, like, growing up. Um, he helped me out a lot, like, when I got my security clearance for my job at State Department. And he helped me out when my mom was sick. And he, she doesn't know this, and I don't wanna tell him that, but he would tell my mom about working for the city, and he did influence me a lot to take action, be a part of something, and to be involved. So I wanna thank him, but he left. Anyway, to, um, remind you guys, um, like, my background. Um, I grew up here, lived in the city for over thirty years. This is all I know. I went away for college and for other jobs, but in the back. Right now, I don't have anything to keep me away from doing a city council job for the foreseeable future, at least all the way up until March when I expire, so I'm very available. Yeah, and my background, like, I went to school, political science, got a master's in international studies. So it's a big passion of mine to be a part of something bigger than me and to get back. And I appreciate you all for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Hayward. Do we have any questions? Mr. Hayward?
I'm sorry, just to clarify, you were saying something ends in March?
Well, the next election.
Okay.
And I picked up my packet of papers, so I'm filling all that out.
Mr. Hayward, uh, what, what are you doing currently?
I work for a movie production company, and I run movie productions in the area. But right now, there's not, nothing going on, so.
I understand, all right. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Hayward. Uh, before we continue, I need to go to the citizens for comments. Would anyone like to comment about either of these candidates? Nope, all right, citizen comments are now closed. We're gonna need a motion from the council, uh, to continue, uh, with this, uh, vacancy, fulfilling this vac- vacancy. That's a motion. So, motion made by Lloyd Roberts. Do I have a second? Second, by Leslie Notera. Mr. Roberts, you have the floor.
Yeah, uh, once again, I think we're, we're blessed that we have two candidates that, um, there's no wrong answer here, right? Their votes being qualified, and more importantly, I feel like they have their heart in wanting to work for our city, so that's wonderful, so.
I'd like to echo his comments, but I'm gonna go to.
On the question, um, we have one vote, we have one vacancy right now and another one coming up in less than three weeks. Why don't we just put one of these people?
Because if we did that tonight, we would not have, uh, properly posted the second vacancy.
I believe two oh six C of our charter gives council full authority.
I presume the silence looks in my direction. Two point oh six certainly gives the council full direction to proceed as it desires in filling vacancies. The, the vacancy advertised this evening, or that is being heard this evening, was specifically advertised to fill the one position. Uh, if this council feels that it may yield, um, yield additional candidates to fill, and, and for the sake of clarity, both in the record and in what we're talking about here, you are presently filling the vacancy owing to, um, Ms. Livingston's resignation. In the interim, since marketing this position, it has been announced at the risk of stealing any thunder, that Vice Mayor Shirley will resign from her position effective in the next few weeks before the end of the new year. I'm understanding Councilmember Banker's question to say, well, if she's, if her resignation is forthcoming, she will put both these specific people in those vacancies with different effective dates. You would still have to decide tonight who fills this role, so we can swear them in. There is no other role to be sworn in tonight, which is another procedural but complicating factor as to how you proceed. Ultimately, it is your discretion as to how you proceed. Um, I, I, I think both positions have good merit, which is, we told people, we noticed that we would be filling one position tonight, not two. And somebody may have said, you know what, I wasn't really comfortable at that time. Maybe now I am, or otherwise, and you may be able to get others. But I understand Councilmember Banker's position that we have two vacancies and two people. Well, how do we wish to proceed? In this case, the council, the, the charter states that you folks fill vacancies. I defer to you as to how you proceed. It's your city, your community.
And my, my, my only point is that we're not doing anything underhanded, illegal or whatever. We have to write up a two oh six C to fill a vacancy. We don't have to, or advertise.
And I'm, in, in the meantime, while you, while you discuss or deliberate, I'm also verbally stalling while I get to read the precise language of the charter. But I would tell you that, um, legal is not really, as you said, a, a concern here.
Just not interrupting, I just, um, you have two candidates. You have three months before this election cycle is over. You have a vacancy coming up, so it doesn't look like there's a favoritism or anything like that, or friends and family are gonna be pulled in the next over. You've got two great candidates. And I don't think you're violating the charter at all in fact, I think, or, like, my motion is to follow the charter.
And so the language of the charter, and either, of course, I would submit, follows the charter. The, the language of the charter, again, for clarity of the records, is filling of vacancies. A vacancy on the council shall be filled by a majority vote of the remaining members of the council. Any person appointed by council to fill a vacancy shall hold office until the next annual election, and, and it continues, um, as to how we would proceed if there were less of you, et cetera. There is no statute specifically governing this, because this is one of the, like, the remaining home rule powers we have. So this is a home rule decision in that sense of how do we, how do we proceed? And again, I tender it to you as a council as to how you proceed. I did not anticipate the inquiries, so I have my apologies, but, um, that is ultimately your, your judgment. I would suggest regardless that you decide how you're going to fill the first vacancy, um, regardless.
All right, I have, uh, I've heard comments from, Councilmember Banker, I'd like to hear comments from other council members before I give my comments. Yes, Mr. Roberts?
So we, we currently have two candidates. It sounds like both candidates have already filled out the, um, qualifying package for the election coming up in March, which is a good thing. However, my real question is, um, Randy, so if somebody, let's say we postponed it until the next meeting for this election of the second opening, and that person had not qualified for the election in March, what, what issue would that cause?
A great question. Thank you, Councilmember Roberts, for the question. And for the benefit of all, the question is, is it, is it, is it relevant at all how we fill this position relative to whether or not the person is qualified for the March twenty-twenty-three record, um, election restated? No, uh, you're really specifically concerned with just the, the bridging the gap, if you will, between whenever you make the appointment and the March election. You need not have qualified. Um, in some communities, people are very adamant that they want anybody serving in an interim capacity to not be running. In other situations, people wanna know there's the possibility of continuity, and that's, again, a personal decision that each of you make, is you weigh who, who best to fill the position. But there's not any direct relationship or requirement between whether or not somebody opts to run in March and whether they are suitable, qualified, or et cetera, to serve between January and March.
Other comments? Mr. Chester?
I'm, I'm just a little slow to change what we already had planned. Think Frank makes some good points, but, you know, I came here tonight ready to vote. That's the way it was proposed.
Okay. Leslie?
Hi, I'm thinking that we've voted for place one person. Should I be alone with him right now? There's still opportunity that even if the qualifying period is not over until the eighth, I see that as a benefit, that someone's taken the initiative to be interested in a qualifying period election because it was such a short period of time. Gives us kind of a view from a voter standpoint to see what a potential candidate might look like on council long range. But on our agenda, we have, we came in tonight to vote for one person. There's currently one seat open. Even though in the future there'll be a second one, it's not open until the end of December, and I think we should stay in the quarters.
And then my comment is Vice Mayor Shirley is not out the door until she's out the door. She may get a voice in the middle of the night or something that makes her change her mind and realize just how much she loves this community. So I'm not giving up on her yet. I would also, I know for a fact that there's several potential candidates who are still weighing in on the whole, do I have to do a full financial disclosure report? And I think that they're, because they're already considering running, it would be a shame not to give them the opportunity to feel Vice Mayor Shirley's seat and at least know it's coming instead of having to kind of get blindsided by a hasty vote tonight. So I would prefer that we hold off and only handle one seat tonight. Mr. Baker, I'll give you the last word.
I apologize for thinking outside the box.
All right, so that being said, we now need to decide on one candidate. Where are the ballots at?
One in each seat.
All right, before I actually, before we actually vote, I have to go through a few things. I have some formal proceedings here that I have to follow. But I'm still using my ballot. All right, it says, "The mayor has the duty to maintain firm control of the meeting consistent with provisions of the City Charter, City Code, and Robert's Rules of Order. The mayor shall announce that the audience must refrain from any outward display of approval or disapproval of any applicant." The mayor states that the seat being filled shall hold office until the next annual election in the city on March 19th, 2024. The mayor shall confirm with each applicant that they are a qualifying registered voter, which I'm about to do, qualifying physical resident, qualifying permanent resident, and qualified by civil rights. So let's take care of that one right now. Is Ms. Elliott still online?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. So I'm gonna ask you each one of these questions here. Are you a qualified registered voter?
Yes, sir.
Are you a qualified physical resident?
Yes, sir.
Are you a qualified permanent resident?
I'm.
Are you a permanent resident in Bel Air Beach?
Yes, I live there permanently.
Okay. And are you qualified by civil rights?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, now let's go to Mr. Hayward. If you would, sir, just stand up for us and let's confirm this. So are you a qualified registered voter?
Yes.
And are you a qualified physical resident?
Yes, sir.
And are you a qualified permanent resident? And are you qualified by civil rights?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Let's see here, we've already done our presentations and let's see here, we asked questions, so we've gotten past that. And I believe, oh, here we go, after the council has concluded its inquiry of the applicants, the floor shall be open to the public, which we've done. The clerk, Mr. Reefer, was the timekeeper. After the public addresses, council members shall vote by paper ballots with results announced that an applicant has attained a majority of the votes of the council members voting. The city manager shall announce the results. So everyone find your ballots and let's vote. Only pick one.
Okay. Councilmember Frank Baker selected Kimberly Shaw Elliott. Councilmember Mark Chester selected Kimberly Shaw Elliott. Councilmember Leslie Notaro selected Kimberly Shaw Elliott. Councilmember Lloyd Roberts selected Kimberly Shaw Elliott. Vice Mayor Jody Shirley selected Kimberly Shaw Elliott. And Mayor Dave Gaddis selected Kimberly Shaw Elliott. So that is six.
Thank you, Mr. Reefer. And so that's unanimous for Elliott. I'd like to thank Mr. Hayward for volunteering, and I'd like to welcome Ms. Elliott to the council. Normally, we would call you forward to be sworn in. I believe that has to be done in person, is that correct?
I think it'd be best if we did, given that there's no urgency and a Ford of Shaw Elliott, a little bit of the pomp and circumstance of being present for the moment as well, unless this commission, unless the council feels otherwise, I think that would be fine.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Hayward, next month? We're doing it again.
Sure.
So I will see you at that meeting also. And congratulations, Kim Shaw Elliott. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. I'm very honored to be part of this council and looking forward to working with each and every one of you, and hopefully you too, Shirley.
Okay, so now we have to do a motion to appoint the applicant who has received at least four votes, which I believe we've already established that, but we have to do it formally. So I need a motion to appoint Kimberly Shaw Elliott to the council. Motion made by Liz Limatero. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll give that one to Mark Chester. We're gonna have to take this to a vote, so. Mr. Reefer, would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Frank Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Chester?
Yes.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jody Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Dave Gaddis?
Aye.
And so it's unanimous, and now it's official. Welcome to the council, and we'll see you to swear again. Just for the record, did I get that right? Was that close enough? Okay. And I would like to thank Ms. Notaro for the assistance also. All right, now we are on to item number thirteen. This is to authorize the city manager to execute a purchase order for the replacement of the community meeting room carpet. He says he doesn't like the color. No, I didn't say that. Thought I'd throw that in there. Mr. Reefer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, this is to replace the carpet in this area room. This carpet's been here since the building was built, so it's been used for thirteen-plus years. Many public meetings and wedding and other party rentals have happened here. It's just, over time, taking its wear and tear, as you can see, starting to show. They're fading and some stain. So given the amount of meetings and rentals that we do in this room, we've been saving to replace the carpet each year in our budget, and I found a quality carpet that included the quotation form, which is off of a Sourcewell quote, which is also an alternative, alternate contract source on the state's Department of Management Services website. It is a Berber Liam carpet shade. It adds some tones of green, but overall, it's a gray, not so much of a defined pattern as what we have in here. But when the staff looked through all the samples, we thought that we wanted to catch the green undertones that this room has through its trim already, and we feel that this will, over time, not show stains as they come from the use. So like I said, I included the specifications and the sample. I've also laid out the sample and I even put you guys pictures, so just to, so you could see it in the room. But again, I'm asking that, being that this is piggybacked, or sorry, quoted off a Sourcewell contract, there was an RFP done by Sourcewell, that we move forward and approve this purchase, and the amount is gonna be for $32,493.03, and both the, like I said, the material and labor are quoted off of Sourcewell, so we satisfy purchasing requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Reefer. Before we bring this to the council, we can go to the citizens for comments on this item. Anyone like to speak about the carpet? All right, citizen comments are now closed. Gonna need a motion from the council. Would someone like to make a motion that we authorize the city manager to execute a purchase order? Motion made by Leslie Notaro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roberts. Ms. Notaro, you have the floor. All right, any other questions or comments? No? All right. Because this is a large expenditure, I'm gonna ask that we do a roll call, though, just so that we're on record of spending some money.
Okay, Councilmember Frank Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Chester?
Yes.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jody Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Dave Gaddis?
Aye.
And so it passes unanimously. Mr. Reefer, you are authorized to proceed.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we're up to item number fourteen, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? In that case, we are now up to item number fifteen, which is city council comments. This month, we begin with Councilmember Baker.
Three weeks from today, we'll be celebrating the birthday of Christ while his perfect father saw itself here in the night of his birth with his forty doughs. He's older than we know. I hope pray that all residents, they have a bright Christmas of their own will this holiday season, finally Merry Christmas to the all. The city manager, leave legs off for January, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. All right, up next is Councilmember Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I know there's been a lot of talk, discussion, and wondering about the infamous Form Six that we've been challenged to deal with. Something that's coming up, I believe it's Wednesday, the Florida League of Cities has established a Zoom meeting, and so I'm planning on definitely signing on to that. And really, my message is, if there's, Mr. Mayor mentioned that there were several people that he's aware of that may be considering, I would highly recommend that if you're considering what I hope, I would love to see like twenty-five people fill out packets to run for our positions. But if you're interested in running and you have some question or you're concerned about the Form Six, I would highly recommend, I'm sure anybody can get on the Florida League of Cities website and go ahead and sign up for that session that they're gonna be presenting. I would also assume it's gonna be a question and answer type environment, so we can all learn a little bit more about it. I kind of get a good feel that there's so much discussion going on about this particular issue, and I kind of feel like a lot of us may be, I think the state is marketing this very well, that they're causing scenarios, and I can't walk in anybody else's shoes, but I feel like they're causing uncomfortable hints to anybody that's considering or is already in positions that are gonna be part of Form Six. So please take the opportunity, anybody that's interested in running for a position, to learn everything you can about it. And again, it's this Wednesday, and I think that would position everybody better to make a decision that they have more knowledge about and ultimately are more comfortable with. And Merry Christmas to everybody out there who's listening to the city, to our council, and everybody in the audience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Up next is Councilmember Chester.
Yeah, I would like to wish everybody a safe and happy holiday to everyone out there in our little community, and to my fellow council members there, and our two paid associates over there as well. And I want to, second one, Frank said, this is a great time to spend with family, but it's also a good time to remember why we celebrate what we are doing, and it's the birth of Christ. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chester. Ms. Notaro?
We say Merry Christmas, yet holidays to all council members, to all the residents of Bel Air Beach. You all have a safe and wonderful holiday.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Shirley?
Well, I want to start by saying thank you all for the two candidates we had for the open seat. I hope that you'll come back when we have more seats, because I foresee that coming in the near future, as I have resigned my position on council due to the Form Six requirements that the city law has been putting in place. And, you know, it takes away some rights to privacy as us council members. Yes, we are elected officials, but there are some things that, you know, between my husband and myself and not open to the public, and my financial disclosure is one of those things that's just not open to the public. So especially given some of the history of this city and some of the lawsuits that are still open, it's an uneasy feeling. So I have chosen to resign, although I appreciate everyone's support and have been blessed to be able to serve our community and hope to be able to still help out with the city in other areas where we won't provide, where I won't have to provide that Form Six disclosure. I want to say thank you to everyone for putting a bag in aid to support the city. Also, just Merry Christmas. I hope everyone has a blessed holiday season with their families and get out and support our community whenever the opportunity is there. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Shirley. It's been an honor to work with you, and I think you're still going into a work session, is that right?
That's right.
Okay. So I won't say my final goodbyes, at least on the council, until then. I'd like to remind everyone here and at home that you are what makes Bel Air Beach the envy of Pinellas County. Despite the many rules that Tallahassee has thrust upon us, we still need talented and trustworthy candidates with a love for their city for this upcoming election. If you would like a seat on this council, please help us. Help us to keep Bel Air Beach, Bel Air Beach. And pick up a packet from Kyle, a candidate's packet, and if you're seriously thinking about it, please, as Mr. Roberts suggested, look into the Form Six presentation. That's Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Okay. And I appreciate you bringing that up. And other than that, I will say this. And other than that, oh, I will say this. The way that I've calculated it right now, we're either going to have five or three seats that need to be filled in the next election. So that's, it'll be three if it doesn't. If the, we don't produce the council, it'll be five. That's a huge bill for Beller Beach because normally it's four and three, but we're asking for five people right now, so I just want to keep that in mind. This is a wonderful community that we live in. I think that we're all here because we love this city, we love our neighbors, and I'm hoping that there's others that are willing to and put themselves out there to serve this great community and help keep it what it is. Other than that, I'd like to wish everyone Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Frank Banker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, good night, everyone.